All right, so we'll go ahead. You guys set. We'll call the meeting to order. It's the Moretown Select Board. Guys, we're starting the meeting here. It's the Select Board. It's Monday, May 1st. And we'll go ahead and go with general public comment. So I think Neil, you were probably first for that.
No.
She's here for something else.
Oh, okay. So I was inquiring about the contract prehouse. Because I noticed that they're advertising it and they're saying they're creating their second one, which should be ready this spring or whatever, this summer. And so now I'm just trying to figure out, are they allowed to do this? And are they allowed to have a business still even though they're not zoning or anything?
Well, I know zoning had been working with them. I think they had denied a permit, if I'm correct.
Right.
And went to the DRB, I think a week or two ago. I don't know.
And then, so I discovered today that it's in the environmental court.
Okay.
I don't know anything about it. I thought, okay, I heard environmental court. And I said, okay, so because the reasons they denied it, one was because it's not an environmentally friendly area. And then, so I didn't know, is the environmental court, I'm asking the question, could it overrule the DRB on everything?
I think so. I mean, I think again, it's the difference is it's the highest court with environmental within the state. So I think they could probably overrule the town shirt and circle.
So no matter what the DRB says about having a campground up there, they'll overrule it?
No, I don't think they, it's not their job to overrule it. They'll look at the evidence and determine that it was done correctly to the law. They're not making law. They're just making, they're interpreting the law with what has been presented to them.
When the town has the laws in front of it and they made decisions upon that, would seem like they were accurate, I think, of the DRB. So if they changed it and allowed for a campground up there, whatever you want to call it.
Sure.
Would we have, I guess we have a lawyer, I found out today.
Oh, yeah, we have lawyers.
Yeah, I didn't know that they were going to be doing this. I, you know, so.
So then I would believe that we would have an opportunity to appeal the environmental court. I think you can go maybe to the Supreme Court, John? Is that how that would work?
Never been in this situation.
But I will make the zoning administrator aware of what you've shared with us tonight as far as what's still going on. And I don't know, I didn't read the findings from the DRB. But I don't know if they're still allowed to continue operations or.
Who knows?
Well, I think, I think it would probably be in the determination from the DRB. And then the question would be, who enforces it?
Right, that's me, that's the zoning administrator.
But I mean, usually, though.
Notice them all.
You know, the town, the town.
Karen was talking.
Usually the town is, you know, when they make the decision, it's usually followed, you know, by environmental court.
They have to fight for doing things, you know, continued building and all this stuff that they've been asked to stop. I don't know. And then if they rent it, all these two places, and we don't have a 911 address, is that? I'm trying to figure out who's really in charge.
Yeah, well, I think if this judge or the courts, the courts are in charge of it.
What?
At this point, and I think you should share with us, they're in the environmental court. So they're the ones that are in charge.
If they don't rule and they're in, if they're in business already and if they enlarged their business and there is no 911 address, is that?
Well, that's why I told you I would let Karen know what we've learned tonight. And if that is in fact in violation of what the ruling is. And then we would find out, all right, is it the court that enforces us? Typically, the town has to force the court to enforce, whether it be fines or such.
Okay, so, you know, on this case today, so Paula said the environmental, people can continue doing what they're doing until the environmental court makes a decision.
All right, so it sounds like you know the law, so why did you ask this?
No, I understand that, but he's, but I'm questioning it because it's a business and they're carrying out a new business that is, has a danger, that has no 911 address. Can trucks get up there if there's a fire? I personally just went through zoning on two houses. I had to make the road wider and do all these things. What I'm trying to say is, who is?
Well, that's why Neil, you just shared with that with us tonight, okay? And for the third time, I'm going to tell you, we're going to let the zoning administrator know and then follow up with if that's in violation of what the DRB, you know. Unfortunately, the town does not have the policing powers that most people would like or probably that we might like, just to be, you know, judge, executioner and such. They all go through a process that's sometimes slower than we'd all like. But again, you're dealing with a town. So in order for a town to make decisions, five of us need to be around the table and we need to discuss it. This issue that you're talking about has been out of the select board hands from day one. This has been a zoning violation, it appears. And so she has been, Karen, our zoning administrator, has been following up with it and pursuing it right through the system that's.
She's not a good thing. I just, you know, it comes to me all of a sudden, like I did report some stuff that they will continue to do. All of a sudden, I look at it and they're, they're acting, they're taking the second place and that's why I'm all riled up.
Yeah, no.
That's why I'm beating myself.
And I understand your frustration. I do as well, especially if they've been told that they can't do this. And I haven't read what the findings were. If they're in violation and they're continuing to do it, I can't see the courts looking favorable upon that either. Eventually, these things do find their finality and I think you're, we're getting closer.
Yeah, the bottom line is we just need to get an update, either from the zoning administrator or from.
There we go. And now that we have Neil's input, we can say, this is what's going on.
Wow.
And is there anything else that should be included?
I didn't know if the environmental court can like overrule the DRB on basically any decisions.
I think they would, they wouldn't overrule the DRB. They would, they would enhance the DRB. They could say, no, that is not allowed on environmental concerns. And then it could go back to the DRB on any other concerns, I believe, if it violates any other standards.
You know, like I said, you have to have a primary residence in order to have secondary residence.
Yeah.
Now, could the environmental court overrule that?
No, again, they're, Neil, I think they're not, they're not a court just to make law. They are following the law. And what they do is they interpret the laws that we have, whether they start with the state statutes and the town statutes. And they try to interpret to make sure that we all are following and there's not a case law that states that this has been done and this is the outcomes of it. But.
The meantime, the town has missed out on all the revenue from not having their place assessed. We're just kind of going over these things and building more than it's never been assessed. And I don't know about the taxes, but.
Well, you can't assess it because it's not legal. So it can't be assessed because it's not legal. And that's why it's not assessed.
And the whole thing is illegal, that's why. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and next up with, how about next night, Neil? General public comments?
Nicole, I live across the street, that's September 13th. And I was just wondering, where is that going? I know that the authority, the court's found for any other contempt. And supposedly he's being fined, I don't know if paying these fines. But the same contractor that's been making traps and everything over there has been showing up again, tearing things down, threatening to remove things, retaliating, just, you know, standing outside our doors, you know, getting involved.
Sure.
The court order states that the contractor needs to be approved by the select board. I understand Frank has not made an effort to reach out to you. I also understand Gray isn't longer on the select board. So I'm just wondering who the contact person is, what the next steps are. I'm feeling like my safety is in jeopardy as well as my quality of life. And I really don't have a lot of hate for the conditions of all of Frank's properties. And I just want to check into the select board.
Sure, we are, thank you for coming tonight, Nicole. We are going to be discussing that. We are going to go into executive session. Since our last meeting, we have tried a few things. It hasn't been unsuccessful. So Dick of Valentinity, our health officer, and May had a conference call with Ron Shems, our lawyer, this afternoon. And we are, after executive session, I expect that we will vote on action. So if you want to wait around for an hour or so, or come back in an hour or so, or jump on Zoom, or get the notes tomorrow, you can find out what we, what direction we're going in now. But it is moving as we were just talking with Neil earlier. These things take a little bit of time. And the ultimate outcome was to allow you guys to continue being able to live there, working with Frank. You know, that hasn't been going so well. But we have a possible solution to that. And I am just cheering forward. And then hopefully we can move forward with that. And we can share that with you and talk to you about that if you wish.
Yeah, that sounds great. I know the court order is also a part of that, Frank having anyone that is displaced because his, you know, construction or lack of, so I want to make sure that everyone can really have, I mean, Frank's expense, future is not to bring.
Yep, that's, and that would be working with Ron to have the court enforce that. And we'd be willing to do that certainly. But yeah, come back or hang around and then we can let you know what we're, what we're doing.
Thanks, Paul.
All right, you're welcome. All right, we have a little bit more time. Sorry, I know the greater discussion, these things happen, this is what Martin told you. Do we have an update on the amphitheater? Is that what you're?
For parking, parking lot, it's been grabbed by a gun. You can review it, I can talk to you, you have your.
All right, yeah, I wanted, if you have it, why don't you go ahead and leave it? We don't have time to discuss it tonight, but John and I.
It's an aerial map and shows, it doubles the parking and solves the schools drainage stuff.
Drainage problem.
So.
Right.
You can call me if you want to talk, otherwise, it's, you know, it's a drive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, let me check on, whoops, I have someone here I need to upload through here. Everyone keep an eye on that one. There's someone in the waiting room, please let me know. Mike is trying to get in. All right, Martin and Miss Baker. How you doing tonight, Martin?
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So allow her to introduce herself, but go ahead, Gretchen, if you want to.
I'm Gretchen Baker. I work for United Construction Forestry. I'm the salesman in the area for John Deere Construction Properties.
So Martin invited you in to share a little bit about.
Yeah, Gretchen offered to come in, so I took her up on that offer. And so yeah, I think that'd be a great idea. Jeff played, it was kind of short notice. Gretchen stopped in last week and Sasha called me and said, maybe we should drink an opportunity for the other sales rep. And I did reach out to him, but it was just short notice, so he wasn't able to make it. He said he was more than happy to answer any questions via email. So yeah, so Gretchen offered, I took her up on that and here we are.
Thank you.
So Gretchen, we have a John Deere grader now.
You do?
It's, it's only has, what, 8,000 hours on it?
Eight to five, eight to five hundred.
Is that, is that a lot of hours?
Once they hit, once they hit about 9,000 hours, we find the trade value declines rapidly on those. You're pushing 9,000 hours. And currently, the lead time isn't very far out. It's, yeah, it's a lot of dollars. A lot of towns turn them, try to turn them over around seven.
7,000 hours, yeah.
Is kind of what I've been finding recently.
And how old are those typically at 7,000 hours in a lot of towns?
It depends on how many miles of dirt road they're grading and if they're running two graders or not. So if you, for example, have 80 miles worth of dirt road, that's 160 miles you're grading.
Yeah.
And I'm, I know these guys are out all the time.
Yeah, no, we use it, I think, a lot more than most. We have a lot of.
I think a fair amount of it's, I think, if you compare us to surrounding towns, Middlesex might be comparable, possibly Berlin, but the valley towns, uh, Duxbury would be similar, but Wadefield, faced in, they have maybe 10 or less miles, but they have well 50.
So is it usually years or miles or the condition that they're trading them on?
Usually hours.
Right.
It's an 07, is that right? It's 07.
07, yeah, okay. So what tells, what is new since we got this other grader and what would be, you know, what are the?
A lot of things have changed. I mean, number one, emissions. Emissions laws went into effect in 2014. And I believe emissions laws are changing again. I believe for heavy equipment, it'll be like 2027. I personally wouldn't want to be one of the first prototypes getting it to 2027.
Right.
And my understanding is we meet most all of the current emissions that are coming out for 2027. So we're not going to have a whole lot of changes. That's a big difference. The other difference is we do electric over hydraulic, which is very cool. So there's joystick steering or EH controls, which will allow more flexibility within your operators. So if you have Martin here that wants to use this function for one thing and another operator wants to use it for a different thing, then you punch in your code and it automatically goes to your settings. There is different slope grades that comes, slope grading that comes standard, so you could, Martin could set his grade. And it'll automatically do that within the machine, so you need less operator experience. Us as well as CAT, I know they do the same thing because operators are not as experienced as they once were.
Yeah, I think you see a lot more turnover and such in the industry, so you probably.
So kind of what, so what Gretchen is saying is, doesn't matter who gets the machine, if they set the slope to 3%, the grader's going to compensate for that 3%. And 3%, me might be totally different than 3% to you. It's a, it's an operative variance.
Right.
The machine takes that variance out of the equation. So you get proper crown, proper slope, water's getting off the road, such things. So they're pretty neat. Our machine's not a DEF machine, emissions machine, which I write. I'm not ecstatic to be going to a new machine that's going to use DEF. Talked to some mechanics for United, for CAT, probably 60% of their calls are DEF-related from emissions related, just because that's across the board for trucks, excavators, graders, loaders. It's just been a complicated system to master. They're getting there, but then now we're meeting, going to have to meet a new set of emissions, 2027. So I'm confident that all, whatever machine we report just is up to date on the emissions and DEF. It's just kind of a complicated system that's thrown some loops and trucks that we've owned.
Right, and we've seen.
Both the loader and grader were both pre-emissions, so we didn't have to worry about that.
Now, with the graders or with your John Deere, how many different models do you have?
Oh, six, eight.
Now, when you look at us, what would you say, what category are we in or would you, how do you come up with that?
So we have, all of our models come, you can either have them in four-wheel drive or six-wheel drive. I do not push four-wheel drive graders in Vermont. You have, we have massive hills here. You don't want a four-wheel drive, you want that six-wheel drive.
You have six-wheel now?
Yeah. So we would have a 670, a 672, a 770, a 772, an 870 and an 872.
What are the 670 and 8s?
Size wise.
I mean, when you say size, are you like, width, length?
Weight, all of it. So your eights are going to be humongous. I don't think we have a single 870, 872 in Vermont. Standard is either a 672 or a 772. And given the hills, I would push for the bigger of the two in this area. You go into Richmond and Essex, they all run 672s. Out here, pretty much everyone goes with the bigger machine. It just adds the weight, it's able to push that dirt.
Uphill.
Uphill, which is important. You take your Moretown mountain road, you want a big machine for that.
Yeah. What do we have now, Martin?
I think the one before was 772. So that's where we find the.
If we're at 8,500 hours, by the time, with the lead time, I mean, we're talking, we're going to be over the 9,000 hours. So I mean, how much of the heat are we going to take on that?
No, your trade evaluation is locked in with me right now. And I talked to Martin today. I have had a $40 price increase since we built the grader three weeks ago. So essentially, no price increase.
Yeah. Yeah. So what we do with that is, is we will send out, really to come from Sasha to Martin, but just a formal request for that. And then we'll open it up here at whatever our next select board meetings. So you guys know, John and I spoke earlier in the week, we're looking at having a vote either the 20th or 27th of June to vote on the purchase. The idea is that we would get something out in a week or so, as far as an RFP, get that back on that. I think we meet on the 20th. Is that the day that we meet?
Our next meeting?
Is what?
It's the 15th.
15th of May.
No, no, in June.
In June. It was the 20th, right?
Right, so we would have them back by the 20th of June. So gives you plenty of time if there's any change or that, then we could make a decision that night.
Yeah, I was about to have Gretchen. But Sasha called me earlier this week saying, you know, we sent them our, the thing of that is, I know what I have for a grader now, but I don't build graders every day, right? You know, it's like, it's a complicated process. I'm going to rely on Gretchen, Jeff from, the potential is, you're leaning heavily on scrupulous, you know, dealers. You need them to be honest and forthright because Gretchen could cheapen this machine up so that we jump at it. But that's not something I want for 15 years. It needs to be built and built right. And we trust the salesmen that you're, you know, you're dealing with. Maybe, I don't know, but, you know, maybe a snow, a P for snow blower, that's one of them. But this is a, you know, $400,000 machine. It's not that easy to build that RFP and make sure I'm covering all the bases. So I'm a little bit out of my depth with this, you know, and get it F and R it. I know what I think I want, but it would require me talking with a lot of people to find out. I mean, essentially, this machine, very similar to the one we have now. There's been upgrades, mostly in the engine compartment, in the emissions, you know, but some creature comforts. Big choice we have to make is driver control. So the old Amper Rack styles, you know, you've got this Amper Rack, they call it. Notorious for rotator cuffs. Sasha's father has rotator cuffs surgery. Going to guess it's probably from years of running grader. I run grader for a day and my shoulder's killing me. Like it's, you know, it's a old style. It's a, it's hard. It doesn't seem like it would be, but it's constantly moving.
Ergonomics is very.
Exactly. So new styles in both CAT and John Deere, joystick controls, everything's down here now. So we've gone to Berlin, Wadefield, and Middlesex all have more graders to kind of.
Compare.
Pick and choose what we think we would like for controls. And I think we'll be going with the joystick controls, which is just basically you're, you're literally, you have joysticks in your hand and all the controls are right here. It's going to be a little bit of a learning curve, but half a day, I'm guessing, it'll be.
Well, the machine's going to be smart enough to do it for.
Is that going to also have the program that another person, the one you were mentioning?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just like your kid changing.
Yeah, I know.
By pushing the button.
That was part of the. Old school along. Hopefully I'll get other guys in the grader more and they probably will adapt to it better than I do, but that's fine.
Is there warranties? What's a warranty on?
Before we move on, just to address the.
Yeah.
The RFP. So the intent, I know it's come along fairly quick. Not like we had time with the fire truck to sit down and make RFPs, but I think general with the size and also, as you mentioned, are your sales consultant sharing.
For municipalities?
What?
We do comprehensive warranty.
Okay.
Which is everything that'll be checked on the left-hand side.
And then it's per how many hours, certain number of hours or whatever?
Graders are 84 months, 4,000 hours.
Okay. So as far as putting together a price, and again, it sounded like you've kind of put one together and we have seen some numbers. I guess we are relying upon you is to make sure that we're getting a machine that satisfies.
That we think I want.
Right, but we're also looking for value too.
Yes.
You know, you know, sometimes people say, well, what about the shiny thing there? Or, you know, we don't need that. But as he said, something that has the ergonomics, you know, that's up to date. I mean, I can't imagine any of them are not going to do the job. But there's, we're not looking to cheap out on anything. We just, you know, we're not looking to, you know, we just need some functional, something that we can get another 17 years or whatever it is.
Heated seats for Martin. You know, just something that's going to do a solid job. We're all in this together, right?
No, I think in, you know, United, for all my old trucks, they've been around a long time. They're not leaving anytime soon.
So where are we going to be serviced if you? So where would it be serviced if you had it, if it broke down, where is it serviced?
Williston.
Or the road.
All right. So Williston on like the corner, is that where?
No, we are, do you know where Engineers Construction is? On Williston Road.
Past Home Depot.
Yes, okay, yeah.
We're directly behind UCI on Papa Shumpert Road.
Okay.
Okay.
What's the lead time, basically, once?
Five months.
Five months?
Yep. It takes three months to build a road grader. I am five months out. So I looked it up yesterday. Yesterday I was working, Sunday. And if I were to order that machine yesterday, it would be here for right around Labor Day weekend. So it's really not bad.
Yeah.
Trucks are out 18 months.
Yeah. Then you said we would do a vote when? June 27th or something?
Either 20th or 27th, I think. We've looked at a couple different cases. We talked about that.
And then, so we would maybe be able to say, you know, release something by July 1st or something.
Oh, absolutely, by then.
And that would be five months.
No, that, that would be a townwide vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So five months from that basis, we would be meeting.
Basically, yeah. With what we have.
Yeah. And that's about as quick as we can do it. Because it has to be in a 10-day window. It'd be 30 days.
Yeah.
And then 10 days within that 30 days or something like that. So we check into that, and that's where we came up with those dates. But we may wanna change that. But it'd be the 20th or 27th that we'll have, you know, the answer. Typically, the townspeople, for something like this, were usually pretty not gonna get lucky, I don't know if I wanna say that. You know, they see, I mean, we need a grader.
Yeah. So that's reality. Finance, I'm assuming they made the recommendation to pull the trigger on this?
Yes.
I didn't really hear anything one more time.
Yes, I did.
Now, are you gonna need a municipal lease on the machine or to just buy it outright?
Well, we'll, undoubtedly, we'll finance it.
Okay. We offer up to seven-year municipal leases with a $1 buyout at the end. And for example, if we ordered it July 1st, I would lock in the July 1st rate. And then if it comes in, let's say, December, and the December rate is lower, you get the December rate.
You're talking a seven-year spec?
Seven-year spec.
And what is it, what's today's rate?
6.25.
6.25, right.
Well, that was yesterday's rate.
Oh, yesterday's, what?
It was yesterday's rate because today's May 1st.
Okay.
And I have not gotten updated by reference.
Any other questions for Gretchen? Have any more questions?
Can we keep with coffee?
Oh, of course you can, yeah.
You guys are supposed to look up here and tell me when someone's nah, I'm gonna go. Other than, all right. So we all good with questions? Gretchen, do you have any more questions for us?
Not in, not particularly. Martin knows how to get ahold of me, and you guys all have my cell phone number. Please use that if you have questions. The store number, I try not to be there.
Okay. On the road, huh?
Not selling anything.
You guys got, you bought out the place that crossed from Agri, right? Is that you got?
So Orton, yeah.
One down to Montpelier, yes. Yep. We consider that we have 52 parts stores. So if you needed parts ordered in, Martin's going down to Montpelier. You could actually order in through that store.
Directly from there.
Not that I necessarily would recommend, like, one of the green Bonmore guys work on your grader.
I'm not.
But to get parts, if you needed parts, he could order it through that store.
Okay. Very good.
It's very handy.
Well, thank you very much, Gretchen, for coming out on a rainy night. Though it's kind of nasty out there, so be careful driving home.
Thank you for having me.
Very good, Gretchen.
Appreciate it.
Martin, do you have?
I have some other stuff to go over. I don't know if you wanna take care of other things.
Let me just look at the agenda here for a moment. Now, why don't we?
6:35.
Yeah. Martin, what do you, what you have, select board?
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Good luck.
Sand.
Oh, right.
So I don't know if everybody knows, is aware that Verins is on a very limited basis this year. I haven't talked to Sue, the owner, personally. She didn't send me the email before we received it, basically giving the same information. But I would have to assume this is her last year at least. But maybe not, maybe needs to change. I don't know. So when you read her message, she's open today, possibly. If the notch was open, I didn't check with her. She'd open from 12:30 to 4:00. Monday through Thursday. Close Fridays. It would be off probably in the winter. Like, no, she'd be closed from June 12th to July 4th. So two weeks, three weeks, I guess, close. So we had that sand quote from Donahue, Stefan Donahue, that I certainly didn't feel it was fair to lock him into that. He wasn't aware of this situation. I don't think anybody was until she sent that email. So he was bidding on the knowledge that she's gonna be open regular hours. So I've talked with him, talked with his mother, who I think does the billing and everything. She said, yeah, definitely with those hours and stuff, there's no way they could even get the job done. You know, you're talking, best-case scenario, three loads a day. And then you're down a month in the middle. And like, three loads a day means the truck has to be sitting there at 12 o'clock.
Right.
So that's just, it's not doable. It's not, you can't get one truck for a thousand yards. Possibly a fleet of them could get it done. But the bigger companies were obviously much higher than him. And I'm assuming if they knew of the situation, they wouldn't be interested in that quote anyway. So long, I guess, the long and short of it, I'm kind of looking, so.
So would they give you any indication of what they would do?
Verin's?
Yeah, Donahue.
So here's the thing. So Verins also went up $2 yard in sand. That puts them at $12 yard. Works out to $168 a 14-yard load. Northeast makes a half-inch manufactured wind sand that, after some haggling, I got them down to 875 a ton. It's like a 1.3 conversion rate. So that works out to about $175 a 14-yard load.
As opposed to what was the one?
$168. $7 difference. For 4,000 yards, that works out to just make basically $2,000 on the money for that material. I like the idea of putting a manufactured sand. It's basically half-inch plant mets that we'd be putting down on our roads. And right now, we purchase 3/4-inch plant mets to top our roads. So you're not contaminating your roads with sand, aggregate. The downside is, we don't know how this stuff is gonna store. There are towns using it. Berlin uses it, loves it, claiming they love it. My concern is freezing, because it's very dense, very, very dense. And I think Stefan will have issues with it in the smaller body. Sander is poly, so that's a plus. But I think it'll be an issue with that. And then the other, so freezing's the issue. The other issue being it's a half-inch manufactured sand, so half-inch stone. We'd get 3/4-inch stone from Verins. So if there's an ice storm, it's those 3/4-inch pebbles that keep us on the road.
Yeah.
Basically. So if you get half-an-inch ice, you're, you're done, you know?
Right, it's going up right now.
Exactly. So I love the idea of the manufactured sand. I'm concerned with.
And maybe, Kelly knows, do they have problems with it freezing over in Berlin? I mean, have you heard that complaint?
I haven't heard it, it's not that bad.
Yeah, to the road foreman, he claims.
Do they put any salt on it or anything like that?
Right, straight. And I think it's very similar to, once you get to the center, if it's not frozen, it's not frozen, right? I think there'd just be, my concern is gonna be a little thicker crust. And then once you get through, it's not that, I mean, most of our winter weather is 30 degrees and over now anyways. But if you get a minus 10-degree day, it's gonna stick to everything, I believe. But I'm pretty much ready to ask if the board is going to put out the trucking quote again. We switch it to Northeast, which is about the same haul as Verins' time-wise, and see what we get back for quotes of.
He should, what's the word thing is, if he just reach out to Donahue first and say, look, this is what we're gonna do.
That's what I wanted to add.
You know, it's basically the same mileage or time. Yeah, no, I mean, it's the same.
He's from, he's from Washington, I think, right there.
Yeah, somebody had benefit of them.
Yeah, so, I mean, it might benefit them to do it. And I did tell her that we may possibly resubmitting the quote, so I'd keep her updated.
But I think you should just go and check if she'll do it.
See what they'll give us for a trucking quote.
Yeah, see if they're gonna keep the same quote. Say when you sign it, and just tell her right there, we're not gonna switch.
And then my thought is, we would fill in with Verin's sand to, we have what I think is approximately 800 to 1,000 yards down there now. We would probably stockpile that in one corner and open that up in case we got a freezing ice storm or something. We could use it. Stefan could probably use it in his sander all year long. And he's putting out three yards at a time, nothing major. And then we'll see what Sue and Verins end up doing. Maybe we love this stuff and we just go with that anyway.
Right. But I think it's, you don't have a lot of choice.
Yeah. We don't, I don't believe we do. I think we've gotta, I mean, like I said, I have not personally talked to Sue, but I think the writing is on the wall. She's open for six towns.
Right.
You know, and that's it, so.
Yep.
I think she's doing it as a favor to the six towns. But in reality, not much of a favor to us, it's just.
Right, they're doing what they can do to make it.
Correct. Yeah, to close gracefully. So, so there's that. All right. So River Road paving, put up that notice there. Doubtful they're gonna pay this week. I haven't heard from anybody today. I see the equipment's there, but.
They dropped some notes.
Yeah, but I mean, they're gonna need decent weather to do that. Parking lot out here, I know we're doing the stormwater. Stefan seemed to be thinking that we were digging up the parking lot as well. That anything that is happening this summer.
Is happening this summer?
Yeah.
We are digging, the town crews digging up the parking lot.
I don't know if the town crew is doing it as well.
Well, yeah, yeah. That's, that's.
I don't know, you and Ray were working on that.
Yeah, that was, that was the.
I know we talked about it one time, and I said it was a possibility, but no follow-up. It's not on my summer plans currently.
It's not on your summer plan.
Not at all. Concerns are, I guess, like, what are the plans? Digging up the pavement and maybe urban going four feet, two feet, six feet?
I thought that Ray had been pretty much talking to you about that.
No, Stefan brought it to my attention. I said we did discuss it one time as a select board, I remember, discussing that. If it came to that, we could do the digging. But I have nothing on my radar for this summer. I mean, I'm not saying it doesn't make sense. I just, the logistics of that parking lot getting dug, and with the attention to pavement, no.
No.
Why?
Mainly because of the clay.
To get rid of?
Get rid of that clay.
But if we don't pave it, we're not gonna.
Well, we're gonna pave it eventually. See, bottom line, so much time's gone on since we got the grant.
Right, right.
I mean, there's just no way.
So the way I understood it was, and I think I was under the impression, as was everybody else, that grant was for stormwater and parking lot, correct? And we all were under the impression that $300,000, $1,000 was covering it all. And then it came to our attention that it was just stormwater. And then we were looking for ways to kind of finish the parking lot, get it done. And I think that's when the discussion of the town crew digging it up came, you know, to a forefront. But no follow-up to me. Which is a little concerning since we're meeting first. And I have more work that I will get done this summer already planned. And this is time-sensitive. I mean, we basically have to be in here as soon as the school closes. And then, I don't know, I'm sure, like, John, I'm sure you're aware of the amount of buried utilities, buried water lines, buried, I mean, we had an old town clerk's office over here that had power buried to it, water buried to it. We have water lines buried to the fields out here. We have light poles with stuff buried. We have a well in the middle of the parking lot. Like Eugene Grantfield has a water line. I'm sure he's probably not the only one in the village with a water line.
Sure, I think so.
Right. So that's mine.
Is that what you just mentioned, the school's trying to deal with the drainage issue by that corner or something? That's why he's?
That's being dealt with with the drainage. That's all, that's all being dealt with, with the drainage. That's what the drainage project is.
It's a big job.
It is a very big job. Not that we can't get it done, but we won't be getting our other projects done that we talked about. Is there a design plan, or is it just we're gonna dig up two feet, or?
No, as far as the, is, is the architectural plans and everything.
There is plans to this, okay.
Actually, it's the second.
Round.
Second round.
Right. I mean, I was part of the stormwater with the sediment pond and all of that. And I don't disagree that it needs to be done. I'm just, like, is the island going? So all the trees and the island?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Well, I think that's what.
We can try and get Ray on the phone if you want.
Yeah.
I don't think we need him tonight, but we need to.
Is there a site draw, an actual site drawing, John?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's all sorts of.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a $350,000 project. It's well-engineered, it's not.
Right, but does that include the parking lot as well, or just the stormwater? Because that's why I think we've, we're all kind of out of gas that it was that much money just for the stormwater. So are we just kind of winging the parking? No, no, I mean, I don't wanna put it like that, but we're, you know, we're.
I, again, it's something that I hadn't been working on the project. But I do know, listening to what has gone around and what Ray was, that they were, it's a fairly sophisticated project.
Oh, it is. It's extensive.
And so let's, so we're not speculating what it is and what it's not, what it includes and what it doesn't. Let's get Ray, and Ray's contacted me in the last couple of days on another issue, so I know he's available. I'll contact him, and we'll get everyone together and figure out what it is and if it's something that we can do. together and figure out what it is, and if it's something that we can do or not, or whether it needs to be done with a different tunnel.
Okay, um, so that, yeah, so the twenty eighteen international, um, originally had gas yet last summer. We waited on it for five months, got it back, plowed for half the winter, started going through coolant again, holling for mud season, uh, Sean had to pull over it with uh using antifreeze, so got it up to Clark's EGR cooler, got it back, ran it for about six hours, same issue, got it back, towed it to Clark's, um, I questioned them at that point whether it was indeed the EGR cooler when they told me that the head was back. So they put a new head on after I was, I wasn't belligerent, I was just like, listen, I'm not happy, I'm not gonna haul upstream, but, you know, you tell me the EGR cooler's gone, six hours later, the head's bad. I'm thinking the head was bad all along, EGR, no, no, I'd walk it. They changed the head, took it for a road test up there at Allegiance, got it back, still combustion gases, they changed the Ecar, EGR cooler again, took it for another test drive, got it back, now they're saying the head's bad. Like, I, I don't know what to do, like I.
The head's bad again?
Supposedly, I don't, I don't, I'm not, and I'm not a mechanic, but people I've talked, Sean, like, he's saying, he says, he thinks the head could possibly be warped, the block could be warped, and their tolerances are too much, uh, so, and part of this was, they weren't even working on the truck, it was just sitting up there, really were trying to figure out who was gonna pay for all this.
Right.
So I called the Navstar rep and said, listen, I, it doesn't matter who's gonna pay for it at this point, we need the truck, you know, unless you're gonna lemon it and give us a new truck, the truck has to be repaired. The only other option would be another Allegiance shop in Colchester, so fix the truck, and we'll argue about who's gonna pay for it after the fact, well, they want to do a top contact, and Navstar rep, he was very good, all of a sudden, things were warranted, and it was gonna be paid for by, one hundred percent by Allegiance, so I don't know where it is now, but frustration doesn't begin to.
And will they have it back for them?
Will we be without it for another summer, right? Like, they have all the parts they claimed to fix it, but is he gonna get it back and run it for two days, and, you know, it goes on the hook again?
It's just a role like that, there's gonna be something else causing whether the bottom or the injuries.
Exactly, like, they should at this point drop a whole motor in, in my opinion, but.
Yeah.
Uh, that discussion with the Navstar rep, found that out today, because supposedly we're gonna be able to pick it up on Friday, we called, nobody returned our calls, so I called today, nobody returned my calls, called again, called again, finally got somebody, obviously nobody wanted to talk to me, um, and they said, yeah, this is what's going on. It's like, well, at the very least, you should have picked up the phone and called, because you said it was gonna be done Friday, so I just, hmm, so I'll talk to.
Put the head, the new gasket on, the third time again?
I, yeah, they're in the, they say they have the parts, and they're changing the head once again.
But they'll do it again, since that.
Well, of course, yeah, I mean, I've got, yes, as well, so it comes down, it's either.
Crank or something.
It's either parts, defective parts, but you wouldn't expect multiples, but possibly, technician error, which is possible, who knows, um, or just there's so, something else leading to these family like they are quickly, like, very quickly after their.
So it puts a lot of pressure on them.
Yeah, exactly, so, even mind the thing that sat apart for four months at Allegiance in the middle of the summer, so I don't know what that would do to the motor, they claimed nothing, but they, they literally had to rebuild the motor because things started to rust, even though they treated it and fluid filmed it, and so.
All right, well, it was frustrating, but it was a very frustrating.
Sounds like they kind of acknowledge it's under warranty, so I guess.
They did, the last, I was told, yes, they were gonna warranty this, but still doesn't help me when I'm trying to work on. Exactly, with three trucks, and we're down to two, one that I'd really rather not drive a lot, if we don't have to, like, you know, the fifteen years, because, yeah. And that covers up to my last, so I have to, basically I have to buy a new set of tires, um, summer tires for, my tires are not gonna pass inspection, and we're gonna have it longer than inspections in August, I believe, and it's uh not gonna pass inspection with the summer tires, the original summer tires that came on it, so we put um Sean's summer tires on my truck to run out, and with the plan of buying new tires to put on Sean's truck to.
Makes sense.
We assume they'll have miles on it at some point, um, and then they will either just sell the tires into a chapel, um, and put winters to send with it, or we'll send it with the summers that are basically wore out, so, uh, that's about fifty, six hundred bucks, I think, right now, the quote, I have been looking around, but it's pretty much the.
Fifty six?
Fifty six for eight.
Eight dollars.
Eight, yeah.
Well, tires have gone up, even regular tires have gone up.
I bought a snowmobile tire the other, not a snowmobile, but an ATV tire the other day, and they wanted like two, three hundred dollars, some ridiculous.
That's, uh, that's where I'm at with that, but other than that, we're, we're, I think we're going good, we obviously doing fantastic with mud season there for the longest time, and all three eighty degree days did kind of raise a little havoc, but we went through half of what I had stored for inch and a half stone, so that's better than usual.
Yeah.
But uh we were down Sean's truck, and we were down Rodney's truck, um, his truck had a valve failure in the hydraulic system, he couldn't raise his dump body, so we were down to the workhorse, which is the O fifteen, and it, you know, and I didn't dare take a chance, so I hired um a mortimer, Nick Pizali, to haul for a day, two days, um, to just make sure we had plenty of stone, not knowing where we were gonna go, we were kind of chasing our tail with just one truck, but, um, other than that, we're.
Down moment.
Yeah, what's that?
I said never a down moment.
No, doesn't seem to be, I get like bucket list done, and then it just comes back in, so, um, we're in pretty good shape, uh, planning on maybe starting to dig as early as next week, if the weather looks like it is, we'll be jumping around a little bit, take care of some ditching, uh, culvert issues, uh, stuff like that for a little bit, but then we have our bigger projects that will get on as the summer progresses, one of them being that, the big culvert on the common, um, I don't think we've heard, we've got the Better Backroads grant, but I think it looked good, um.
Yeah, I think Cheryl and Stu will just probably.
Um, and so that would be a, a road closure on the common road, obviously we need to more than that, close the road down for probably a week, I'm guessing, we're gonna have to step ourselves down into that to be safe, because it is so deep, um, but, so, we, yeah, we have some big projects planned, um, so we'll just.
When you didn't have plans.
Yeah.
Um, quick question for you, and I know you did an email from me, and I was asking about um Cobb Hill, uh, Mike Brigano.
Yes.
And the work he did over there, uh, as you guys all remember, last year, there was work on Cobb Hill, might just permit, uh, there were some um requirements that Ray had worked together with them to make sure it was, was done, um, they stopped the work prior to finishing the work, the permit expired, uh, probably a month ago, um, either way, they wanted to um see if we would uh give them an extension on the permit, so I had Martin go out to check to make sure all things were done and that the claim paid.
I, and the work looks really good, I think, there's some uh cleanup that needs to happen on the edges, some trees that were just kind of moved out of the way with the root balls and stuff, but the road base is excellent, very dry, very, uh, well, took care of a lot of drainage issues leading up to the beaver pond, where they stopped, that's where they stopped the work, and there's water coming down the road, um, there was a tree across, so they can go up, I mean, I literally could see the beaver pond, and that's where the work ends, um, so there is a teeny bit of erosion happening there, but uh having walked the property before any work was done, there was a lot of erosion happening there already, so I think it's, you know, they can get up there and address that, that would be great, but if not, I don't believe it's related to anything they did.
It's a benefit anyways, we finish the project.
The landscape of the road.
So we will extend that permit though.
He's on the, it's like, yeah, he's on the Zoom, yeah.
Mike, um, did you have any questions?
No, no questions, uh, yeah, I think, like I said, Martin saw what the work that we did, and, yeah, we, we got a lot of the erosion controlled, but I think we still have a little bit more ways to go to improve the infrastructure, and uh, yeah, looking forward to moving forwards, I appreciate you guys' support.
All right, thank you, we'll uh sign off on that, it'll be, it'll be in the office here.
Cool, thanks a lot.
Um, all right, so that's, that's it, I just wanted to make sure you were, I wanted to get your feedback.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, so why don't, um, now we will go ahead and um go into executive session, Dick here has been continuously waiting.
Yeah.
Nicole, thank you, Martin, uh, Nicole just came online, um, Nicole, we're just getting to move to executive session now, so if you wanna jump back on in, um, you know, fifteen minutes, um, welcome to, so I'd make, or John, why don't you go ahead and make a motion?
I'll make a motion, if we go into executive session, um, under section three thirteen, number one, I'm sorry, three thirteen A, number one, where we have found that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body or person involved at a substantial disadvantage, and that is for F, confidential attorney-client communication made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body.
All right, so and add to that, um, all right, let's get a second on that, if we could.
Second.
Okay, thank you, um, more discussion, uh, that, um, the reason, thank you, John, but um the purpose of we're wanting to talk about the Frank Piazza situation, so that's out there, and I would invite our Dick Valentinetti, our health officer, uh, to come with us into executive session as well. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, all right, so, well, we're just, executive session where it was the full board plus Dick Valentinetti, our health officer, and we also had our attorney, Ron Shems, on the telephone, and we will be having some action. John?
So I'd like to make a motion that we move forward to seek receivership for financial uh.
Financial discovery?
Discovery, yeah, financial discovery, uh, in the Frank Piazza case.
Seconded motion.
Seconded by Robin, any further discussion on it? All right, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
No opposed, all right, so um Ron will be sending a letter to um Frank's attorney tomorrow, or contacting him, letting him know that we are seeking receivership, and that Ron would be um doing a financial discovery as well to make sure that there's some funds to pay for this, but um it, the process is not gonna happen overnight, but it will, Ron said it'll be as diligent as possible, but it will probably be um about six to eight weeks before we can find someone to appoint uh as a receiver. All right, so if there are no questions, we'll go ahead to the agenda. Dick, thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Thanks, Dick.
All right, so we had ARPA funds discussion, we had that scheduled, so let's go ahead and look at that, um, so, sorry, I guess, I'm just, I know I wasn't here, but I was a little surprised that we had, um, distributed more ARPA funds at our last meeting, as we had decided, um, we talked about getting together with the um financial committee to find out really kind of what we had, and what we were doing with it, um, so Don, you made a motion to um, was it thirty five thousand?
Yes.
What was that for?
Go ahead, sorry.
Well, see, can't continue on with the, the next phase of design, um, for the town hall, so that we could be ready for the, the, all the, you know, the grant process in, in the fall, the big live, the sixteen and twenty five million dollar grant funds, so, you know, so there would be, you know, we could, you know, keep the momentum going and get that design done, because when we were informed by that, you know, the state and their grant thing, that the more ready a town, towns will be with their projects, they're more after to get the fund, the funds.
So what was the?
This money set aside for the lift, the fifty five thousand, and we were taking thirty five thousand out of that.
From the lift money?
From the lift money, which is in things designated as town hall.
Right, now I saw that, is, are we gonna still need a lift, or is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, but then that can be funded in.
Funded in the grants.
But ac- actually, that, when I went back and looked at stuff, that was the recommendation from the ARPA committee.
Yeah, I saw that.
But that was never something that, that we took, decided on, it was just a recommendation from them.
To use it as a lift.
And it was for the town hall project.
Right.
And they had in parentheses, the lift.
Right.
Yeah, looking at that piece of paper.
But we hadn't, we hadn't decided on that.
Right, that's what we decided on.
And then, and then looking at these other expenses, I mean, the problem is, we did an RFP for that first phase, they've got three more phases, no, four more phases down here, and, you know, we're looking at, so what are we supposed to do? Put that up for an RFP every single time?
No, we don't have to, you know, our RFP, we have two things, we have in our uh purchasing policy, and we also had in the original RFP that we would have the um, this, this right here. I forgot to put my glasses on.
Right.
And we don't, we can continue on with the same firm.
And where, where in our purchasing policy is that?
That's on.
Address that.
It's right here.
Cheryl, how could you find that?
I know, well, I went over, spent all, last week where they're working on it, and that's right here. Uh, whatever. Recurring purchases, this was adopted in twenty nineteen, purchasing policy, signed by all you guys, and so it goes, a recurring purchase, the total value of a recurring purchase of a good or service is anticipated to exceed five thousand during any fiscal year, the bid process shall be utilized and shall specify the recurring nature of the purchase, once a bid has been accepted, all future purchases shall be made from that bid or without necessary, necessary additional bids until such time as the select board votes to initiate a new bid process. So we had that, and then in our RFP, we also put, um, using design professionals for both schematic design and implementation of phases.
Right.
So that was in, that's what went out to six bidders.
Correct, right, right.
So, that's what we did for that.
But what I.
But again, yes, we, the funds, um, you know, it's, there's a lot, I know there's a tremendous amount of demand for the funds, but this is a tremendous project for the town, you know, and it's, it's.
Is the, is the second phase, is it thirty five thousand, or is it twenty two thousand?
It was twenty two, but we just carried it as an allowance, because there's a three thousand dollar potential of a three thousand dollar survey that's in there, and also. of a $3,000 survey that's in there. And also, if we went the route of a construction manager at this phase, rather than, you know, there's two ways to approach this, get final design drawings and then put it all out to bid, or do this, this next design phase, also have a construction manager that you'd pay $5,000, you know, potentially, who would help develop a lot of, some of the build out and the design build phases, you know, thus ending, you know, cutting back on some of the architectural stuff. And you'd be more shovel, you know, you'd be able to get other contractors online if you want that route other than the full, you know, bidding. It's written up in the, you know, I can show you that in the, I don't know if I dropped that with me today. Can I look at your copy for now? But anyways.
Here's it.
The bottom line is the yes, the next set of drawings would be, they're 22 and potentially 3,000 for some, an official site survey, which I don't, I'm not quite convinced we need. And then, like I said, if we did the construction manager thing, or we just stay with hard contract documents and we'll have something that we can put out to bid. I'm just trying to find this line here. Well, what, well, I'm looking for this, let's carry on.
I mean, I certainly would feel more comfortable if we had had the money in the budget for the 99,000 for VIA.
I'm sorry, what?
The whole project, their, their part is 99,000. I mean, we, we never had a townwide vote or anything for that.
No, I know, but we don't have to, we're not going, we're not, we're not gonna, you know, we're not going at that whole, that stage yet. When we get to, we are going to end up having a vote, but we're also going to end up funding this project with grants, so there'll be, there'll be a little of both. You know, there'll be both of those scenarios.
That's true, but generally speaking, anytime we, anytime we have a vote for a project or a piece of equipment, you know, we always talk about arranged financing, which in many cases includes grants. And, so I mean, I...
We just happened, this, this, you know, the ARPA funds was, was a way for us to be able to do this project. That's what it came down to. You know, we haven't gone, you know, we asked, there'll be a stage where we end up having a vote to build the project and expend the money to spend $800,000 or whatever with 400,000 in grants and another 200,000, another grant or whatever, you know. I don't know what those numbers will be. And some of that will end up having the rest of the architects cost.
Yeah, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem, I wouldn't have a problem if in fact, we had decided for that 90,000. And that's the impression that I was under when our last meeting, is that the 90,000 was. But then, when Cheryl and Tom and I went over the numbers, there was no 90,000 there. And as a matter of fact, if we put it in there, we're, we're, we're done. We're over our funds. You know, with the 200,000 from the, 200,000 for the fire truck.
Well, we had the 90,000.
We've already overspent our other funds.
We had the 90,000 in there at one point for the, for a lift, so there was 90,000 put away for the town hall. And that's what we said the other night, was we'd utilize some of those funds for this next phase so that we could keep going, and that was yours.
Okay.
But, you know.
That was my understanding of the discussion, is we did have 94,000 put away for the, specifically for town hall renovation, including the lift. We decided we would try to divert that $35,000 because if we don't renovate the town hall, we're not going to have a lift anyway. We can revote on that now that we have a full board if you want to go against that. But that was the discussion, is we would not be able to continue moving ahead with the grant process in order to refund, in order to fund the rest of the renovation without coughing up that $35,000.
Or that, that'll...
I thought $35,000 was going to pay for everything to get us to the grant process. That's what I voted for last week.
And what has come up, so Cheryl shared with us, or that there's another grant opportunity available for town halls, or is it, it's a half a million dollars?
That's MRRP.
Yeah, I did that webinar. We're applying for that grant. It's $4,000 you get for them to come and do a study.
Right.
So she's doing that, yep. I mean, I have the notes from that, from sitting in on that.
So that's happening in, at our next meeting. Someone from the state is coming to present to us. So I'm wondering, is there overlap there or what these two, what's happening as far as with this 4,000, they're going to come in and...
The 4,000 pays for them to come and do a study of the building.
Right.
You know, an energy efficiency study. We had, Efficiency Vermont did a walkthrough, but this is way more, you know, into the weeds, you know. And so, but what this, what that grant is mainly going to be for is insulation, heating systems, improving your heating systems or your cooling systems, and, and, you know, lighting and such like that. So the crossover could be in the lighting. Our heating system is relatively new, though we could do some, you know, depending on how far down, you know, we go in this revitalization of the building, whether we add any cooling because it would be good to have, you know, I don't want to get way into the weeds here, but you could put cooling in the building for the, for the possibility that, you know, there's some huge heat thing and you have, people can go there and get cool. But that's, you know, anyways, that's getting too into the details. But that's what I understand the MRRP funds are mainly for, energy efficient upgrades in your building. So yes, we'll be definitely wanting to utilize them, but we have other things that we'll hopefully be getting through, the library grant funds, which is accessibility, life safety, the lift, you know, you know, and some of the work we need to do in the lower level.
Right.
Water mitigation and such. So, I don't know.
So how do we, how do we, I mean, you allocated 35, but again, it's 22, and I know you said there's 3,000 of this and 4,000 of that.
We just did that as like for an allowance purpose, just as a place setter, you know, with not the hope of going, you know, of going beyond that, you know.
Because in the first, there was a $2,000 difference between the first quote and then what we were built. There was a difference of $2,000.
Oh, that was the first, the first stage.
We voted 22, 902, and it was 24, 851. And so there were no change orders, there were no, you know.
No, I don't know. I, I can't read, that's, I didn't, let me get into this, I don't know.
I thought, I thought we did talk about that last meeting.
No.
No?
I don't even know if we were talking about it.
So my, my point is, I just don't, if we've got, if we're looking at this 22,000, I'm comfortable in saying, all right, here's your 22,000, but I hate to just throw a pot of money out there because it always is used, whether it's...
Oh, no, I understand. Well, I'm telling them that we have that.
Then we just pull it down and we make those decisions and it's something we all need to, to discuss. And so, you know, I just, you know.
Well, the way it was phrased last week was not, I mean, our last meeting was essentially was either we commit these funds or we might as well just kiss the entire library grant goodbye. I think that was the kind of context that was phrased.
Yeah, I mean, we just, the project, I don't know where we'd go with the project from, from this step on if we don't do this next step of design. You know, what do we, that's it, what do we do?
When you say that's it, I thought the library grants were in the fall.
Yeah, that's when we can apply for them, right.
So why is it, if we don't...
Yeah, because so, so we want to apply for them when we have the next set of drawings done with cost, you know, with some costing on them. And then, you know, and then you apply for these grants saying, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, this is what we're building, he has the drawings. And, you know, and then they either approve it or they don't. Hopefully we do. I'm sure there's, there's going to be lots of, there's competition in all of these things, for sure, you know.
I mean, I would feel most comfortable if, if we could make sure that the minutes show that that 94,000 is going to be ARPA funds. Now, if, if we go back and get grant funding later, the grant funding can replace that. But I think we have to have somewhere down where, that shows that it's not just a recommendation from the ARPA committee, but that we have it down, just like we have what we've spent already.
Well, we got in that paperwork from ARPA, it was just a recommendation of that.
Right.
Oh, I was assuming that was a done deal and that money was sitting in a bank account somewhere.
Well, it is in a bank account.
Well, whatever. I was assuming that we had already allocated that money and we were going to convert it for a different person.
And Cheryl Lynn says that the current ARPA fund balance in the bank is 386,000 to 87. Now, what I don't know, and that's not including the 200,000 for the fire truck and the 35,000 for the town hall.
So why don't we have that in front of us?
No, what does that include?
Because we should have a list. If, I mean, if we're looking at this stuff, we should have a list in front of us of what we have, what's spent and what's not. We should all have it.
We've, we've, we've had some different lists. I know that.
I am.
And if it gets updated, we should get an updated copy of it. So we know what we have and what we don't have when we're pulling it out and looking at this stuff.
Well, I know, and that's why I think Kelly and I had been asking for that, right? And so let's, we have a meeting because we could, we had people from town meeting to such asking for money as they hold. And so we have a reconciliation of what those funds are. I really don't want, I can't speak to it because I didn't know, we didn't know what it was.
Right, and we should all have it in front of us. If we're, if it's looking in there, we all need to have it in front of us at a meeting if we're going to be talking about it. So that we all know.
Well, it's not like we have it and we don't.
Right, no, exactly. That's what I'm saying. We all around the table need to have it.
Yeah, and I mean, that's why I, that's what I, I think I mentioned before we were making any kind of decisions on it. Let's see what we have.
I mean, I said in January, we needed to have a monthly trial balance and balance sheet so we know what the budget looks like every month, and I still haven't seen one. And per most audits, we should be having them quarterly.
I think we have them.
Yeah, because we should be getting them at least quarterly, if not monthly.
I think, probably you can give them any time you ask, but...
We should be getting them quarterly.
I was going to say minimum quarterly.
Sasha, you, you have a pretty good handle on it, right?
On?
On the ARPA.
There was things that I wasn't even aware of. There was things that Cheryl remembers. I think I had things on my list too that she didn't know about because she wasn't involved in any of the stuff.
All right, good, I mean, the...
The last thing I had was dated October 13th or something, 22.
Well, I hope that much has changed since that, since then.
I guess not, I don't know.
Because even if you, I mean, if you, even if you take the 200,000 from the 386.
I know we had some meaning in this.
That leaves us 186,000.
Is what has been, I mean, does anyone have their most current? We had 50,000 that went to...
CV fiber.
CV fiber, yeah. The deficit, right, the 2022 deficit?
Right.
So that's 45. River Road paving. I think, River Road paving, I'm pretty sure.
Well, we had the first round of the architect that was 24 or something.
So if the balance is 386, what's been paid? Out of that, what hasn't?
What was the L?
There wasn't much, was there? There wasn't a report that she had given us.
What about the, the West sidewalk?
I don't think anything's paid on that.
So that's our, that was our, right? No? Okay.
What we were going, I thought neck of the woods was supposed to be, is that, did that come out of a different?
The article actually didn't say.
The article didn't say that. And I thought, I thought way back when, we decided that none of these, we're going to get ARPA funds. We're going to put them in as articles.
Okay, we did.
Which is what we did.
We were going to do something with the fire truck.
There wasn't anything, um...
Nothing. We haven't done that yet.
No, but I know, oh, you're saying what we've spent.
Right.
But...
But that, that looks about, right, that's 57, 17, 152.
And the rub is, we have about 1.265 million of expenses coming out. We have a deficit last year of 45,000. The River Road project of 33. West sidewalk project of 83. North Mordtown sidewalk scoping schedule, 10K. Waterbury Annulates, 4K. Fire Truck, 430,000. Greater, 385, which I don't know if that's in the budget. I mean, in the ballpark, it was 400, I was more than 385, but maybe not. 275 for a truck and 10K of scooby gear for the fire department. And we have 386,000, 37, the ARPA funds. So that's why, any little dollars going out, I question.
I totally hear you. I know. I said that a lot when we were here two weeks ago, I said that.
The other thing we have for money is we have the savings reserve fund. I went back, had Cheryl in, Cheryl was able to get me the policy on that. And so that, the savings reserves was put in place to help lower the tax rate. So, you know, I think this is a year that we may want to consider using some of that money. Also, there's total expenses. Thank God, I don't think we're gonna have, it's not all coming this year, I mean, the four thirty, the three eighty-five, and the two seventy-five, those are the vehicles. Fire truck, the greater, and the highway truck.
That are months out.
So, right, that's next year, uh, the fire truck, a couple of years down the road. So, that's, that's the good news, if there is good news in this, but so, we just, on all those things, we're gonna make sure that we're, we're coming to the board and we're making the best decision possible. Making sure we're not duplicate spending. And for the library project, I think you all know, Don, Callie, I support it very much.
Oh, yeah.
I'm on it as much, but I just don't wanna make sure that, you know, that something that we can possibly get through the state is not gonna be, you know, duplicated by this, this firm. So, we gotta be careful of, you know, those, you know, watching RFPs and, you know, what they're doing as opposed to what is available, and I know neither of us, or none of us, pardon me, know what that is until their next meeting, when the state, when she comes in and presents, and then we'll have a bit better idea of, you know, what Don, Sherilyn, so it sounds like it might be just electrical and heating and energy efficiency and things like that, but.
Well, insulation for the crawl space.
Right, so they're maybe.
Yeah, that's, that's a big project.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, once again, I was under the assumption that, that money had already been diverted, or was already, you know, allocated for the town hall when I voted to divert it. The fact that it isn't, and that we're actually spending funds that haven't been approved yet, I mean, that certainly can change things. Do we wanna bring up a discussion, do we wanna spend that thirty-five thousand on, continuing with the town hall thing? Or do we just say no, you know, and and then try to do the grants with, with what we already have? I mean, it's gonna be a competitive process, so.
Well, the, the, the problem is that V I A still needs to move ahead. Right? So, I mean, and.
Yeah.
And, you know, we spent the twenty-four thousand, well, there's still another seventy thousand that they're, they're looking at, just to bring us up to the construction phase.
No, that's through the whole project, that's till the very.
That's through the whole project?
Yeah, it's through the whole, that's the last meeting, that that was the entire, that is what they need to get to the entire project.
Including all the management, the final punch lists, all, you know, drawings, the management, the job meetings, all of that.
All right.
And at that point, we would have an idea of what type of grants we would have.
We would get, yeah, right.
We can pay for that process.
The next phase of their work will give us what the final design can be, what it's gonna cost, and what, and we can put out there for the grants to see what they're gonna, what we can get to pay for it.
So, can we go ahead, would you mind amending your, your motion to be the, the second phase price of the twenty-two thousand? And if you need the stuff, just come back, I mean, we're not gonna say no to you, but that way we have exactly.
Sure, and then if we need to get the, the survey, or we need to do some other big thing, we'll come back, sure.
Right, and that way the money's, so that way it's just not kinda handed out, which you're not doing, but it's, it's, it's just more accountable.
As increments as you need it, right?
Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
And I think it would make our treasurer happy as far as, you know, following the funds easier there. John, is that?
That would be okay, yeah.
Do you need a motion to say we amend or something, or?
John, would you care?
Well, wait a minute, who made, who made the motion?
I did.
You did, so you amend your motion.
So, just amend it to twenty-two, five, forty-five.
Well, make the motion to amend the.
Oh, right here it is, authorize.
A motion to authorize V I A to proceed to the next phase.
I'm sorry, you're, you're rescinding your motion, I rescind my second.
Oh.
And then you come up with a new motion.
Oh, okay, I'd like to rescind my motion from the meeting of April seventeenth regarding the funding for the next phase of the project.
And I rescind my second. Now you can make a new motion.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to authorize V I A to proceed to the next phase of the town hall project with the ARPA funds designated, no, with, with funding now for twenty-two, four, whatever.
Twenty-two, five, forty-five.
Twenty-two, five, forty-five.
It would be our, our, you have to say where it's coming from, it would say our, it would be our.
With ARPA funds.
Okay, that's confusing, because it says designate for the lift, but they were.
So, now I'll go with ARPA funds.
Okay, second.
Any further thoughts, concerns, anyone wanna say anything? Pardon me, on favor, for I?
Hi.
And I'll ask Sherilyn to be sure, to make sure people are updated, certainly before every meeting or every change on ARPA, just if, if they're big enough funds, send out, hey, here's a new ARPA update.
No, it doesn't even have to be that, at a meeting, just, I mean, it's simple to stick it in an Excel sheet with a column of what we have, what we wanna designate it, and then just print it out, and here it is at the meeting.
Here, and I think we've seen it, because I don't have it personal, but I think she sent out, has sent it out, we had asked before what we've, we've spent. And then we can start looking in, in on our next meeting, what we have in the savings reserve, we'll have a little bit better idea, maybe, actually, but I don't know how to figure out tax rates, but we can start to look, I mean, it's obviously quite early, but let's get an idea of what we wanna do, if there's any of this savings reserve money that we do wanna go ahead, because we need to vote on that as well, and so we wanna put that in our June vote that we have for the truck.
For the greater.
For the.
Pardon me.
For the greater.
For the greater, yeah.
But, and then, now we're having R F P for the greater. So, that, those will have, will have to be in by next meeting. If the vote's the twentieth.
Or the twenty, what, no, we, we said we could have, or maybe thought maybe we could do the vote at the twenty-seventh?
Of June.
Of June.
June.
Of, of June, I'll go Sherilyn. And he emailed today, she said, special vote on June twentieth.
Well, that's what we originally came up with.
Right.
You and I, but we forgot it was, um, whatever day it is.
Right, and that's why I suggested the twenty-seventh.
On Monday, which is Monday, so that's why we're having the twentieth, of the twentieth, if you all wanna have a vote, if we're having a meeting.
Oh, the twentieth.
Why did she put the twentieth on this this afternoon?
And you sent, remember, you sent back?
Because I sent back, it should be the twenty-seventh.
The vote.
Right, the vote should be the twenty-seventh.
Even though, I mean, our meeting is the twentieth, but it doesn't have to be the same day.
No, because we can have the vote, have the, the votes set in.
You have a certain number of days in between the Warren meeting to discuss it, to have.
Right.
No, yeah.
So, it's like ten days or in between, or?
It's gotta, it's gotta be Warren, no less than thirty, or more than forty.
Right. And so, in that, so we come back, and I'll, I'll look at the dates to make sure that we don't need to have a special meeting, but we will have some figure for us to vote on and a reason why for our savings reserve fund. You know, I was thinking it could be a little bit later than sooner, but no, we need to have that, so that we can have that on the morning in enough time.
Makes sense.
And we will say how much we're gonna be using of the savings reserve fund?
Yeah, we, we'd say like up to, you know, whatever it is that we decide on.
Money in this fund shall only be withdrawn with voter approval by the passage of a separate article at a duly warned regular or special meeting at the town. So.
And that's just to.
I would imagine we, we would have to have an, an exact number.
And that's just to lower the tax rate?
Yes, and we've got about a million dollars in that fund right now. Nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and forty-seven and ninety-three cents.
So, just so I understand, are we giving the ARPA back by June twenty-four, or by the twenty? Because that's what I, Martin and ARPA does.
Well, that's what I was wondering about the twentieth, but, yeah.
And I thought, it sounds to me like Martin wasn't really, he couldn't really put a detailed R F P out. He was working with two firms, basically, right?
He's working with the dealers.
Yeah, and he's trying to, you know, get him as, as apples to apples as he can get, but.
Well, that's what I told him, that's what I.
I thought you said carry on and get those two bids and, you know, but he has to have something written out as an official R F P.
Right, and he, and he does, but I, we told him that because of the time constraints, it's not like we're looking at the fire truck where Stefan had, you know, six months or whatever it was to look in to make sure that this is co-pasected to that. And that's where we were relying upon our manufacturers to help us out with that. I, I don't think there's, you know, you get a seven eighty-five, greater, John Deere, there's, there's only so much that you could do with that thing, that we're, you know, that Martin will be able to smoke out, you know, and they know that we're not looking for the Taj Mahal, but that we are looking for a unit that is built to work. And the same with, with CAT, I am sure, so I, I don't think it'll be a long process for them to get back, because he's been working with them, and it's, it's almost fait accompli, I mean, she's, you know, said today that, you know, sugar price hadn't gone down, or went up forty bucks or something like that. You know, CAT's was, I think, fifteen thousand dollars more than the preliminary that we saw, but I think those are pretty much what you're gonna see when you, when you have it handed in. But for the integrity of our processes here, we need to do it that way to make sure it's a sealed bid, and, you know, if CAT wants to, you know, kinda knows what the prices are and wants to lowball everyone, well, you know, that's their, their choice. Obviously, it happening, and I don't know what their availability is anyways, but, so if the twentieth would, I think makes sense, we mentioned it when she was here, she didn't seem to think that, you know, she would've said something if there was a problem getting, you know, a, a quarter away, I think, right?
Yeah, they probably, I mean, basically, she probably already has one built anyway.
Oh, yeah, it is, it's.
So, it's gonna take her.
It's, it's a keystroke.
Yeah, exactly, I'll throw out this option out, this one.
Add this and this and that, or something like that. So, I think we can get that back in time, so we will know.
Let's assume we're gonna get it back in time.
And by that point, then we will already have the, the warning out, and obviously, because, and so the, the warning will, will state not to exceed
This amount.
Four hundred thousand, or whatever happens to be.
That can always, so it's basically.
I think that covers us on that, right?
Yes.
Was there anything else that we were looking at, looking on, John? It was just those two things.
Well, she, she did throw in the town hall project.
And we can't, right, because we don't have any costs yet.
Yeah.
I think that's the only two things that we have.
Yeah, we'll just do the greater and then the savings reserve.
All right. Any other thoughts on our first discussion funds, or anything that we wanted to handle differently, or forward with? So, our next meeting will, you know, we can look at that three hundred and eighty-six that we have, and we can specifically bring some of these expenses directly to them. And we know at this point, or within at this point, we wanna put two hundred thousand dollars to the, the fire truck, but you know, maybe we decide we wanna put less and, and use some of that money something that's coming up quicker, sooner than the fire truck. I mean, the fire trucks, I don't worry, we get a fire truck, we just, you know, however we're gonna pay for it or not, is the, is the question, or not not, but how are we gonna decide to pay for it? Although, you know, I was going down, scrolling around, and I noticed for the state sale, that there's like they're selling their used John Deere greater.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Well, that parked out front, that's.
That was kind of a small one, I don't think it was something that.
No, actually, it's pretty good size.
Was it, oh?
Yeah, I, so I was, I, you usually see trucks there, also there's a big greater, like, it's just what we need, you know, with the parts fit, I don't know. Who knows? Anything that reports communications of? Sasha?
Um, I think we've covered most of it. We worked on the personnel policy the last time, and probably brought that as a suggestion, which I turned out to be one.
Yeah, that was, just that one question, we talked about it kind of over and over again. That was my interpretation of what we talked about, and it's this part. If a town employee is called to service as a juror or witness on a scheduled workday, the town will compensate the employee their regular rate of pay up to but not exceeding their scheduled hours of work for that day. Was that our intent, or was our intent basically to say, if you're on jury duty, jury duty, we're gonna pay you regardless? Because that's what the original wording said. It will say the town will compensate employees at their regular rate of pay for the service as jurors or witnesses. So, if they get ten dollars an hour and they're a juror for twenty hours, we can give them that. Corey had mentioned that, you know, she was scheduled as a juror on a day she didn't work, and she didn't even apply for that.
No, she wasn't looking for that.
Right, but I think we need to, we need to say that in our personnel policy, if that's our intent, because if you don't, somebody's gonna say, come in and say, you know, and the example I use is the road crew. You know, if they're working a four-day, ten-hour work week, and they end up having to do jury duty on a Friday, we don't wanna pay them.
Well, but I don't think, well.
Well, because the town will compensate an employee at their regular rate of pay for service as jurors. So, if you're a twelve, twenty-two dollar an hour road crew guy.
Yeah, but you're, that's not, now we're on a scheduled workday, that Friday, so it doesn't.
It doesn't say that, it says their regular rate of pay for services as jurors. As opposed to my italicized one, if a town employee is called to service as a juror or witness on a scheduled workday, the town will compensate the employee their regular rate of pay up to but not exceeding their scheduled hours for that day. Doesn't that, does that seem to clarify it, or make it less clear? Because I really don't care, it's whatever your intent is.
Actually, I think your, uh, paragraph, actually, does.
Clarifies the statement again, if you're scheduled to work four hours that day, then we'll pay you those four hours. If you're not, then.
Because they can still get paid from the.
They still get paid as a juror.
As a juror.
Right?
Right.
What we're compensating is if they're a juror, and I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt. If you're scheduled to work, we're just gonna pay you your regular rate of pay, and if they give you extra money for being a juror for those four hours, then that's just a bonus. But I don't think we should open the door to have, to say anybody who works as a juror just simply gets paid whatever they do, you know?
Or it gets that subtracted from their.
From their regular. From their regular pay.
I don't want to get into that.
Makes it too complicated. It's just like, if you're scheduled to work, you get paid, period.
And if you can get compensation from them as well, good.
Who cares?
That's your, that makes sense.
Yeah, because I'm not trying to take anything away from anybody.
No, no.
My intent is just, you know, if you're scheduled to work and you're gonna be on jury, hey, great, we'll pay you. Whatever, whatever it is. So we can either vote on that or, you know, have her update it, but it's completely whatever you guys feel.
Why don't you go ahead and update that? And then once everything is all, everything is updated, we can approve the changes that happen again. I think that's a good thing, Rob.
Yep. And the other thing I had is on the ACO, now I know we sent it back to the town attorney for some clarification.
Yep.
Did Ron have any clarification on that?
He's not working right now.
Oh, is it Heather or somebody, the one who had those notes on the thing?
I just got something back from her today.
Okay. That's fine, yeah, just forward it to all of us whenever you come up with whatever the changes. I think mostly it was whether a law enforcement officer was required to actually impound a dog, I think, was one of the critical issues.
Right, yeah.
And then the other things were just minor definitions. And I think that's really the attorney question is, does a law enforcement officer have to be involved? An actual policeman have to be involved if a dog is impounded for either dangerous behavior, you know? Because that kind of puts a lot on Stefan, you know? If you have somebody and he's like, I'm taking your dog, you know? I try to think about the safety of the people doing the work for us and.
Yeah, no, I think there's a little bit of those situations, so.
So that was really, I think, I'll wait on then from that report. If there's anything.
Tom, or did you want some to add on that, Tom?
No, I didn't know. We only, we're talking about, because I noticed some of the things you brought up are also in the meeting notes, but we're not at that point, right?
Go ahead, Tom.
Well, just one thing, go back to what Corey had come in to talk about the town hall cleaning and trying to find, you know, because we just had someone temporary, well, yes.
Oh, as a matter of fact.
And so, and you weren't here, obviously, Tom, but there was a couple of things she, she wanted to see if she could, want help to come in and sort of to solidify the position and help to look for someone, you know? Maybe if, I think what was brought up was that Cheryl and Sasha are so busy, if, maybe if you wanted Corey to take it on to try to find someone to do the town hall cleaning. Because right now, we just have Mary temporarily once a month or something. She would be willing to do that, but can't really do it by taking it away from her library hours to spend the time looking. So that was, didn't really get put in the meeting notes and we didn't really answer that because we were, we were thinking about it. And then also, we were talking about whether, should we combine all the, you know, our three buildings into one cleaning service or continue to have them done by different people or something, you know? And actually, the town garage doesn't even have anybody. I mean, maybe once a month, we could send someone in there for a deep clean, you know?
I think Corey's gonna say was that it was working out.
They're fine.
I think the town hall people were working out, doing the regular kind of everyday cleaning. Her issue was really during the functions where she.
Well, no, then, yeah, who does the cleaning after functions?
That was her biggest. And I did reach out to some cleaning people.
Custodian and the manager, the person who inspects the rental thing, should that be the same person? The cleaning person and checking the rental person for the, that they, you know, took care of their trash and didn't leave the place to mess or whatever?
Well, I think Corey should, my suggestion, I think, when that first happened or something, they get done, I was like, have Corey figure that out because when she knows what's going on there and when she's working and she knows what the function, she knows as it gets cleaned, she can describe to whoever, this is what happens and not kind of guessing what happens. She knows what happens and knows what needs to be done. My only concern is that we don't let her hours go over. Is it twenty-two or three? I'll have to look because she's, she's.
Yeah, she doesn't want it all, you know?
Right, she's budgeted for seventeen and, and it's not even the dollars for a couple of weeks or a month to figure this out. It's, we have to have them pay VEMRs and all sorts of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As long as she can keep it, you know, twenty-one or less in addition to her regular, you know, her hours.
So like, it remains two or three extra hours, you know?
Right, and it should be, I mean, it should be a process that, you know, it'll take a while, all right, let me figure out the job description, how it's gonna work, advertise it, talk to some people. You know, it's not gonna be a ton of time. And then if she needs to be that person that does the inventory and does the assessment of whether someone should get their rental money back, whether is it her or is she comfortable enough with whoever she hires that's gonna come in this? You know, and make it very clear and make that in the job description, all right, this is what you're gonna be doing. In addition, you're gonna be inspecting the place when someone leaves and it's gonna be you or, so you need to be able to have a, be a thinking person too.
So we're going to authorize more hours for her to be able to do that, is that the?
Yeah, a couple, you know, up to.
Yeah, a couple hours.
Two or three hours a week for the next, you know, month to figure out.
Yeah, because you need to find someone, right, yeah.
But not to exceed.
Twenty-one or whatever you said.
Yeah, let's put twenty-two, I think you go up to at least twenty-two. But frankly, I've looked at her hours, she's been around that anyways, so just make sure she does not, in addition to these longer weeks of them. Yeah, sixteen, twenty-two and a half, twenty and a half, twenty and a half, twenty-one, nineteen, twenty-two and a half. So on the most part, she's staying there, but.
Okay.
Keep it, so we're not paying more than we need to. Don, did you have anything else?
Well, just, let's see. Wednesday, we're meeting with some people from District Six, V-Trans District Six. John will be there as well to see about moving, you know, seeing if the state can help us move the RSFS sign, the one that's by the fire station.
Right.
But incidentally, driving into town today, was that our trailer? Is that our trailer?
Yeah, it caught me.
The state put that up. That's our trailer. Yeah, wow, great.
It's sitting down there so that Stefan can kind of tweak the data.
Yeah, and that's also, that's where the, that's where the RSFS sign goes to.
So it can be on the state road?
That's good.
I got an affirmative that I submitted to the state, Route Two and Route One here.
Oh, that's pretty.
That's great. It's quite, it really, boom, it flashes right at you.
Stefan may have something to say. Stefan?
So, yeah, I put out the speed trailer this morning just to try to figure out the software part of it, to figure out how to capture the data. So that was kind of a test thing and I figured it'd be perfect for you guys to see it up and running because all the one of you had to pass it to get down to the meeting tonight. I know there was some discussion of bringing it to Route Two or something. It's seemingly ready to go, so it's up to you guys kind of where you want it to go and whatnot.
Okay, yeah. Well, at this point, I think it needs to be still registered, Stefan, so we don't want to go too far with it.
Right.
Okay.
But we're insured, is that correct? We are insured.
So that's a good spot, right, where it is, Stefan, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
You know what, Stefan, do you think it's worth, should we get a cable or a chain so we can hook it to any nearby object or what do you think?
So I did, today I went and bought a lock for the hitch. So it locks around the hitch so somebody can't just back up to it.
Yeah.
Oh, good job.
Can drive away with it hooked up properly. So I don't know if that's good enough or should we have a short piece of chains or so if I am around something that I could attach it to or?
Yeah, I mean, if somebody wants to take it, they're gonna cut through the lock.
Yeah, I think what you did was probably a good.
Trail hits locks, it's kind of hard to get into anyway, yeah.
That'll keep the honest people out.
Yeah, anybody else gonna take it?
Who's gonna take it?
The more worry is someone doing damage to it, then I think stealing it.
It does have GPS tracking too, if somebody does steal it. As long as they don't disconnect all the batteries right off the bat, we can figure out where it went.
Right, and that's more about opportunity and if you take away that opportunity.
Vandalism is what Tom Constables said, it's more a vandalism issue.
Right, and that's where we may want to, I think, here at night in the village, it's probably okay to leave at night. I don't know if I'd leave it at night on Pony Farm or.
Mountain Road.
Or Mountain, maybe. I know it's kind of a pain in the butt for folks putting it out, but it may be well worth it if we.
Yeah, we'll have to.
Yeah, last thing about.
Yeah, we'll have to feel.
Diligence, I think.
At this point, why don't you leave it in the village and you can move it around either end of the village, Stefan? Do you think of anything else?
But by mainers.
I think for safety, I mean, you know, you want to keep it near the school and stuff. Really, that's the key, you know, school bus stops and things, I would think are really key for the, you know, speed and stuff like that.
Well, the data today, we got somebody at forty-six in that thirty mile an hour zone, so.
I'm not surprised.
So the data works.
Yeah, Sasha was the first one pulled over by a sheriff when we employed them.
She ran the redhead real quick or like a brioche or whatever or something.
But it's easy coming around that corner and.
It is.
I mean, so this will be really good, I think, for people to make them aware.
You know, I tend to be super aware and it caught me, so. Like thirty-eight, I mean, I was really surprised.
Yeah, so forty-one's not so high.
Yeah.
Anyway, so that.
Thanks, Stefan, for doing that.
Yep.
Yeah, we are meeting Martin and John and Michelle Redman and another gentleman is coming to see about physically moving that sign. Kurt, that one there. Then we filed this one-one-one permit for the crosswalk in the village to Ed Pierce, who, actually, I don't know why I didn't do this, John got the email, I should have forwarded to the rest of the board, but it went later tonight or tomorrow. But basically, Mr. Pierce came back and said, well, you know, are you gonna do, you know, the, there was a lot of details, you know, are you gonna do the ADA cut to the sidewalk? Are you gonna supply the signs? And of course, on the post office sign, when I had talked to one of his, you know, someone else who works at V-Trans, we had come up with that, we could just, since we were just trying to put this in not temporarily, but to put it in ahead of the possibly future sidewalk, that we could just cut the, there's a piece of wood curb there and then we could cut it and grade it with stone and grade stone and go up to the sidewalk, you know? And on the other side, of course, we'd have to rework the curb and the concrete. We would have to get the signs and, you know, the potential, so when we talked last week, the potential, we wouldn't be able to do this without getting another grant for like bicycle pad they have. That's in our committee, there's, we discovered, the transportation committee, there's funding for just something like this. But anyways, the response we met back from Ed Pierce was, I don't know if that was a game breaker or not, that, you know, in other words, because there's all rules and regs that both eight, both sides of the crosswalk have to have all the specifics of the, meet all the specifics of the ADA requirement, you know, the little ramp thing and the sides and all that. Well, yeah, we knew that, but, yeah, well, from like when I met with this gentleman, Chris Hunt, he gave me the impression that we could maybe not do it on that side, as I just said a minute ago. But now we would have to build it all out. And then that's building out ahead of the potential wastewater and, you know, all that.
I spoke with Chris. I gave him a call. He didn't seem to think there would, there would be any problem. He didn't think we'd hold any, anything up.
Chris Hunt you spoke with, just recently?
Yeah, last week.
No, I, well, not hold anything up, but you'd have to build out that whole side too, which, you know, it's not the same detail as the sidewalk that's existing at the post office when we're there and all that. That's what, that's what he was saying, maybe do temporarily, you know, not temporarily, but we could do it that, the way I just described a minute ago. And yes, we knew we would have to do the whole other side, so anyways.
So it doesn't look real good because the information you've got, you would have to build a pad on the.
Both sides, yeah.
Right.
We'd have to do the work on the side, the future sidewalk side to the way the future sidewalk is gonna be, which is not in stone yet and we're still waiting to do the wastewater. So, you know, it was a question of how much we, you know, we want to see where that's coming. So the longer the show of it is, we might just have to not do that this, this year. We might have to just wait another year before we can put that in. They are gonna paint the other crosswalk this spring because it was already there existing.
Yeah.
That's District Six is gonna paint that, so, I don't know, we can go over with the drawings, maybe after tomorrow's, Wednesday's meeting and take another look at it, just you and I with the drawings.
Yeah.
See if it's not dead yet. So that was an update on that. I met with Sparky Potter for the byway signs that are pretty faded and we discussed those and, you know, it's funny because it was a really, really rainy day and of course, in the rain, they look great, you know? But each day I looked, I saw them and it was like you can't even read them. So we went over a couple of different scenarios of how that could be corrected and I said he's gonna forward me some costs. I told him we were, I don't think it was gonna be high on the list for this year, but, you know, it'd be good to have the information. Then I was just gonna ask kind of about that email that we got about the folks on Cobb Hill who wanted to, you know, the whole thing about a private road.
We could certainly discuss that.
You know, and so I don't know if we want to just have that on our agenda for another day, start talking about trails again and.
Can I get some background on that?
And Dave Stapleton, you know, I know the planning, planning boys trying to work on it, so maybe we have.
On that particular one.
Yeah, could we just discuss it briefly?
So that, and I.
I kind of seem like I'm somewhat familiar with it, so.
Yeah, well, it's just, and Sasha, correct me if I'm wrong, but George and Tracy.
Tracy, yep.
Their road, they don't have a private road, it's Cobb Hill is what they're asking, right?
I believe so.
The DRB said something about the residents already existed on a private road. So I don't know if they have to access what's considered a private road to get to their driveway or not. It was a little, you read that deep.
They're on the, they're on a town, they're on Cobb Hill, but the trail, they're on the trail part.
So she says he wants to make it a private road.
Cobb Hill Road ends and then it becomes legal trail number, whatever it is.
But you can't make it a private road because that would no longer, it would no longer be a trail for the rest of the duration.
If you throw off the trail.
So they, so, just I want some background on it. So is this a situation like I had down with the schoolhouse? Did these people build this four-bedroom house and now they live in it?
No, made.
They got a curb cut, they agreed to.
Because what appears to happen is, is there was a house that was already there and they got a curb cut to add something. It was kind of vague. And the original zoning was designed for a four-bedroom house, but the owner at seventeen sixty only built twelve hundred square feet. And now it seems like they were converting the permit for the four-bedroom house to be now the primary residence. And then, right, you gotta read the DRB thing. So now the four-bedroom house is the primary residence and the secondary residence, which was there first, is now considered an outbuilding.
Right, but I think the bottom line is, this really has nothing to do with those houses. They want it just Cobb built as a private road. So in other words, as it comes to their place or what did they say?
To trace it to theirs.
All right, we would stop Cobb Hill being a town trail, it's now gonna be tracing George's Lane or something like that. And it is just not possible because Cobb Hill goes all the way.
All the way to, yeah, it goes all the way to the other side of town.
Other side of town, and it's a through trail.
Right.
Maybe all the people on that road would like to, they could all.
Yeah, but that's not even the point.
Take it over, it could be a private road.
The state wants you to have private trails because if we make it. The state wants you to have private trails because if we make it a private road, then the town, if we wanted to develop further, we'd have to buy the, right away back from those people.
Yeah, we, we...
They built a house on a, on a class four road, knowing it was a class four road.
Not a class four road, this is called a legal trail.
It's a legal trail, it's even worse.
Yeah, it's right.
Right, I mean, that's why I had it in the DRB, the permit they, they shouldn't have got.
That's, that's what I, my point is, it seems like, it seems like they built a house without a permit. And it pissed off some of the, one of the neighbors and now they got a restraining order on this neighbor, so...
No, the neighbor lives in another part of town.
Well, he was at the DRB hearing, for some reason, he must have some...
He's, he's off in here, so...
Oh, okay, okay, all right, I'm not trying to upset anyone.
No, no, just tell us.
I was put in the same predicament by the DRB. Somebody built a huge renovation without approval, without any kind of permits, and then went to the DRB after the fact and got approval for it.
That's...
That tends to make residents angry and I can see this guy getting angry and now they wanna make this a private road, the guy that might use this guy, you know, this trail for hunting or something, that would tend to piss me off even more. Well, again, I'm trying, I don't know the background.
Well, I'll give you some background. So, yeah, the, the people who bought the property were not at fault. They, they, or actually, I think it was the person for them, applied for a permit. Our zoning administrator at the time, David, gave them a permit.
Oh, okay.
So, they got the permit.
Okay.
And so...
In January or whatever it was.
Right, and it was, they shouldn't have got it. However, all right, so they get it, they build the house, I mean, that's what they did, and I don't blame them. And, um...
And then it went to the DRB.
They went to the DRB and they could have not even conformed with the DRB at this point.
Okay.
But they're trying to work with everyone and they came in here, they've been actually very good.
Okay, good.
Has improved the road and they improved the road.
Yeah, I understood that, I understand, yeah, okay.
And I think they just wanted to make it more private because this Travis Blodgett, who she mentioned, who should have had a restraining order.
Okay.
Quite frankly, I've had a restraining order against him.
Okay.
He just likes to...
Likes to cause trouble, okay.
Likes to cause trouble.
Okay.
You know, he's, we haven't seen him in six months, but he used to come here and cause trouble, you know, question everything and call people.
And any, anytime we're talking about legal trails or class four roads, he's here.
Okay, all right, that's good to know.
He claims he's an expert and he's just, he's a troublemaker.
Okay, good, good, okay.
So I think she was just sick of having someone over there videoing her, watching her.
I can certainly understand it and I would do the same thing.
And they have, they have nothing, they were, they were, you know, just trying to follow the...
Well, I think our options is the town is either to make it a completely public road, right, or...
Well, I, I say we just don't do anything.
Yeah, do anything.
And just let them know, unfortunately, we can't...
Right, state, it...
Well, anyone, as a town, we can, we can throw up a road anytime we want.
Right, exactly, but the state likes you to have legal trails and they're, they're gonna buy it.
Yeah, right, and if we decided that we want, just so we have background, if we wanted to throw up Cobb Hill, there's gonna be everyone that lives on the other side of it, anyone who uses it to get to the other side is gonna say this.
Forget it.
Right, yeah, we're not, we're not doing it. So it would never pass.
Pass or anyway, okay, good, all right, well, then I think we...
It's all we can do, so there's the...
Yep. What about that other Gary's Hill Road, the guy that wants us to fix his car, did we, we never kind of put, brush that down the road too?
Yeah, we decided to hold off until Tom was here.
Yeah, and I spoke to him on the phone a couple of different times, or very, actually, I spoke to him, we had messages back and forth.
Okay.
And basically, you know, I just emailed him, "Hey, there's nothing you can do."
Good.
And that was it.
Okay, fine.
Those, a lot of, those things like that, you understand, people have problems and they typically ask people, the mechanics and mechanics stuff counts, never do.
Yeah, yeah. I was just trying to shield Martin from, you know, he's obviously getting hard talk from the guy and all that stuff, so...
Yeah, no, he gets, and those, those guys, they'll...
Good, well, I just wanted to make sure we weren't gonna pay the guy money because he hit a pothole and bumper of his Audi fell off.
The pothole is this big.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we've had...
Okay, great.
There were little ones on the other side of Gallagher Acres, so you couldn't even, you know, put a corner in them.
Yeah, and I was just, I was just curious on the Cobb Hill thing and the legal trail, I didn't want a situation where it was like, you know, somebody's coming in and like, you know, well, now we got a house here and we want it to be private and we don't want people walking up our road.
No, it's not that at all.
Okay, all right. That's, that's, that's how it viewed when I looked at it, I don't like it.
Yeah, optics are not good on that.
Yeah, optics were odd.
And rather, one thing we, we started to fund, I think, two years ago, or, you know, one year, this is the second year, is putting some funds away because we know on some of these legal trails, we need to do some surveying.
Yeah.
But we don't have the funds yet for it because it's not a cheap thing to do.
Okay, yeah.
And the planning commission amongst a whole bunch of other stuff that they're working on is trying to, you know, work on the whole legal trail scenario.
All right.
And figure it out.
I'm good with that, I'm good with that, yeah.
The best way for, you know, the town to deal with it.
Yeah.
Cause there's lots of pressure to...
Yeah, no, I agree, I think we can just tell those people, you know, we'd love to be able to help you, but we really, it's not our power.
I think the first one we were looking at was Off Ward Brook, right?
Yeah.
Cause that one, we're, we're dumping stone up there and it's getting blocked with big cement barriers by the landowner.
Like Hog Hollow Road or whatever.
No, it's not Hog Hollow.
Tracy Lane or something?
Oh, Tracy Lane, oh, the other side that goes over.
No, it's Jeff Ladeus Lane.
Oh, okay.
It's connected up in there, it's...
I know it's Jeff Ladeus.
Yeah, I can't remember what it's called.
Yeah, there was that and the trail up at the top of Friedman Hill, we went with that.
Right, that one is less, yeah, that's less critical. So because it still all goes to the same, no one argued about where it ended, it was just a one corner.
Where, where it goes, right, okay.
I think if, quite frankly, there's a lot of, since we've, we looked at that, even online...
There's been a lot of fires, yeah.
Well, there's online that you can go and there's really pretty good landmarks and you can figure out your surveys, they're doing a good job, but...
Yeah.
The roads and the trails are certainly something that we need to continue with and as Callie said, the one over on Jones Brook or Ward Brook, wherever it is.
And I think that was probably, because if we're putting stone into that every year.
Yeah, I think every year we put over the stone.
If we're doing that, we need to know where it is and that it's actually open.
Right, well, then we can, once we know, we don't have to put any more stone in either. So then we can't be, yeah, so, um, Don, did you have anything else?
Well, I would just, well, not the last thing, I wish while Dick was here. He brought the attention about up on the common road here about this mini, sort of like a little mini dump or something. Is he just, is the health officer pursuing that or is nothing...
Is that Shane, Shane's business?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, he called, didn't, wasn't Dick in here or did he say he was going up to look at that?
I think he was involved with it, I'm not sure how that all came down.
All right, we can...
Or we just say we were gonna just let it, leave it be or something?
No, I think we said we were gonna try to have the health officer involved, cause the only other option was having a whole ordinance drawn up about it and I don't...
We don't have that.
I know, I'm certainly not gonna support that.
Yeah, I think have Dick go in. Don, I thought, I was here in the office two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, that was brought up and he was gonna be addressing that. So I think he must be on it or something.
Yeah.
And when I saw, I saw it come through, I saw Shane, and I actually spoke to Shane personally, I know the guy, he's a, you know, just clean this dump up, you know, and, you know, it's claims he is, so, you know, I don't know if there's been any work or not, but he had a bunch of scrap metal and he had a story for it piled for me.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I can follow up, be with him on that and see if he knows if it hasn't. I mean, cause again, we're not here to...
Yeah, no, we're not here to bust him.
Yeah.
You know, we want, you know, help, you know, this trash.
Yeah, we wanna be helpful and getting a result no matter what the situation is, yeah.
Probably five or six cars, it should hang all over the place, but you don't have a lot of care, you know, as long as it's, you know, the smell and there's no, you know, getting out of it, so I don't care.
I think we should just let him come back to us and say, hey?
Yeah, hear the mess.
Yeah, okay.
Callie, did you have anything else you want to give us? I would like to get approval on the meeting minutes for last time.
I'll make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes of four seventeen.
Second.
Second in. All favorable, all right, thank you, everybody.
And I have stuff.
Yep.
Speaking of Blodgett, um, they have a pine tree across from their house and it was this past winter, they, the guys really undercut it quite a bit. So I've been in touch with Northfield Electric, doesn't affect their lines, um, and it also with TDS. I haven't heard back from them, so I'm assuming it not affect their lines. So bottom line, it's, we would be taking it down and Martin and I figured it's gonna cost somewhere between two and three thousand.
Will it hit the house with them still?
I believe so.
And it's on town property?
Yeah, I mean, Martin, you know...
Callie?
Martin and I had both looked at it before, a few years back and felt that it was okay, but now he agrees, it looks pretty bad.
It's on town property?
Well, it's in the right of way.
It's in the right of way.
Yeah.
So it's in the right of way, but it's on, what's it, Martin's property?
It's, it's...
Or is it on Blodgett's property?
I guess that's Martin's property, across the street, I know that.
Why not, just so that everyone... I mean, how does it become our problem, they just...
I don't know, that's my question, yeah. Because it's in the right of way?
I guess, cause it's, it's really, the town's right, down right of way.
I mean, cause we damaged it, we hit it when we were plowing or something, or...
Cause we undercut the...
Undercut the route, yeah, the bank.
Oh, and there's some, that's for the tree service, you mean?
I mean, there are people on our road that have humongous pine trees that are in the right of way, that are literally almost on the lines and they're still there, we're not messing with those.
Right.
And if those fall down, I mean, they're gonna take down their house, so...
Should we add some...
I mean, I...
It's also, I mean, it's...
It's also a big, big job, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it... In the, in the past, when we've had trees like that in a town right of way, um, you know, we've, either the town has taken them down or it's hurt somebody. If, if, like Martin says, it's something he would wanna tackle.
Yeah, that's a big job, a huge white pine like that. They need a crane for that, I mean, now it's bringing a crane, if they're talking two to three thousand dollars, they're gonna pull in a full-size crane. I guess we can do an RFP or something for it and get some quotes, but there's only about three or four guys in this area that have cranes that'll do tree jobs like that, and like Blodgett's, is that what you said, who was your tree guy?
Oh, no, the Blodgits that went...
Oh, that's the person.
Like Barrett's Tree Service would do it.
Yeah, that's, yeah, Barrett's, there's a couple of good guys out of Waitsfield, I know that, but... That sounds about right, cause I've had quotes done on trees where they require a crane, they'd have to close the road and everything, it sounds like, right?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'm just bringing it back to the board, that's all I have.
Okay.
As, as tree work...
Maybe time will solve the problem for us.
I, I mean, I, I'm just gonna follow up again with T.
Yeah, follow up, follow up, um... All right, you know, I just, you know, they, you know, the kid coming in here all the time really being really disruptive and, you know, has been a jerk to us for years, I mean, I just, quite frankly, I hate to put things for people like that. Personally, um, you know, as a board, as a town, I mean, you know, they're coming in here calling us names and, you know, we're idiots and we're this and that, and then next thing you do is you get an email from, "Hey, please come and cut a tree." So... But if we have a responsibility of a town and we have to do it, you know, that's, we can't let our personal, um, feelings...
For somebody jeopardized, or public safety is, you know, public safety is...
Well, that's, and that's what, that's pretty much what, what the right of way is, is, yeah.
Responsibility of the town, I think.
Because, I mean, if the tree fell when somebody's driving through there, you know, so it's more, it's not their, yeah, their concern because it, you know, it's gonna hit their house, but I mean, really, it's our concern is the road.
True, so why don't we go ahead and look at contacting the tree services, you know, John and Sasha and find out who can do it and when they can do it and...
Find out if it's, like, information, is it completely in the right of way, is it partially?
Oh, it's in the right, it's, it's sitting like right there on the road.
On the roadside.
That's right there, that's why they undercut the bank.
Okay.
And as I said, I mean, I've had other situations where I spoke with Martin about trees, um, like Louis, Henry Louis, had asked me and Martin looked at the tree and says, "I'm not in favor of putting it down this time, he thinks it should go," so...
Well, if he does and it's, he's the guy that's out there, um, and that's, and it's our responsibility, then let's go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
We don't have any choice, um, you know, we'd probably rather not, you know, again, if it's our responsibility, go ahead and just pull the trigger on it.
Right.
Sasha, I can send you a name later of someone you can reach out to.
And Sasha, can you double check also to make sure that is Martin's property?
Yeah, cause, uh, Don, you've got someone...
I, for some reason, I thought Blodgett's owned the other side, but it's gotta be, it's gotta be Martin's.
But he, he took down a huge tree for me, so...
Oh, yeah, that's true, too.
It could be a tree climber guy, it could be a little, you know, could save us some money. He's very good and he has insurance and all that.
Yeah, no.
Might not cost us...
Take it down in levels.
Yeah, no, he climbed, it's amazing, I mean, I could show you some pictures of it, his tree took down for me.
So I think Lone, Lone Pine...
I could never do it, he's up there.
I think Lone Pine is about three thousand, so...
He's all tied in.
This certainly isn't as big as that.
What?
I said Lone Pine is about three thousand, so I...
It's not as big as that.
It's not as big as that, no.
No, it's a lot.
This'll be good, we could send, uh...
Okay, yeah, that'll be good.
Say, I'll copy both of you guys.
Okay, good.
That'll be good, done, so they're safe.
And when Doug Reed brought these plans and Ray Dagel contacted me and said, you know, "What's going on with this?" You know, changing entrances and everything else, that would put this whole project on hold and so, you know, we can't do that now. It's a little bit late for that, so... So Ray and I decided that, you know, it's okay, you know, Doug can bring the plans in if he wants, but...
No, that's why I figured that, it's no sense in really getting into it, I think we're, you know, the car now, hard...
It sounds like though, at least the, the bus circulation could maybe, what he's talked to me, cause you should see the traffic back out onto a hundred B.
Well, that's true, yeah.
When they come, people come to pick up their, um, you know, their kids, their students or whatever, their children, their children. And it's really, it goes all the way down past Hurdle Road or the other way, you know, I mean, I think we could see if we could look at that to see if we could change the, he's got a good idea for the, the bus flow.
Right.
I haven't looked at the drawing yet, but you know, what he's described to me sounded like it should, it should be something maybe we could look at to see if we could incorporate that.
Yeah, yeah.
Callie made a good suggestion that...
Yeah, we could reduce emissions at the same point and people could just have their kids ride the bus.
Well, absolutely.
And reduce emissions, because then you just have the bus and you wouldn't have the hundred people that drive the kids to school that could ride the bus.
Ray can look at the plans, if you want, so.
Look at it.
Yeah. Okay, the financial review committee met, unfortunately, I went to get on the meeting, my computer was soaking wet, so I, I didn't do, again, I had to find out where the leak was coming from, so I missed the meeting, but bottom line is, they would, they don't wanna use any of the ARPA money, they wanna, don't wanna reduce any of the money for the fire truck. they would, they don't want to use any of the ARPA money. They want to, don't want to reduce any of the money for the fire truck and just, just fund the, the greater without ARPA funds.
So, no ARPA for greater.
No ARPA for greater and save or continue with the, the two hundred thousand for the fire truck.
Well, let's put this, yeah, they didn't want to reduce the amount there and then put some toward the greater. But I mean, we may want to.
Right.
Reduce that number.
Good, all right.
And that was, and that, and actually this is more old business, but I have, this afternoon I got the proposal from CVRPC for the clerk of the works.
Oh, nice.
Okay, so Sasha, will you be the point person on this?
Yeah, she can send that out to us. We'll take a look at it.
So here, here, there you go.
So is that anything else, Joe?
That's it.
All right, I don't think there's anything else on the agenda that we need to address. If there's anything that anyone has, I'd be willing to, but I think we're all good. So I'd make a motion to adjourn. I'll favor it. What's that? I'll signature, of course, yeah. So we'll adjourn after, um, decide. I'll favor what I.
It's just a sheet on the budget status report.
These are just all overload permits in the sound. Marigas. Joe Fisette. Crystal Brothers Excavator. And then I got the garment's permit on top as well, the other side extended.
I've been getting up because we've had to give Max meds and all that.
Was Clark getting paid for the? What happened?
So we got asked, we up that way?
Justice, okay. Thanks for working the ARPA funds and Don for changing that.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Robin, thank you for the change of that personnel file.
I did all of that.
Everyone, thank you. So everyone have a good day. Everything's done. Okay, adjourned?
We've been adjourned.